Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Lone Tree City Council Meeting. Our meeting this evening is being held in accordance with our virtual meeting policy number 20-01. Members of the public may access our meeting virtually from their computer or their smartphone. There is more information about how to access our meetings and agendas on our Lone Tree, at our city website, www.cityoflone tree.com. There are three ways that public comment is being submitted during our virtual meetings. Any comment that was submitted in advance has been forwarded to council and is included in the record of this meeting today. Any comment that folks want to submit during our meeting, you can do that by entering comment in the Ask a Question in the sidebar, enter your name, address, and comment. Your comments will be forwarded to council and included in the official meeting minutes. If you would like to speak to council live during our public comment period using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question sidebar box, and you will receive a call from the city to hear your public comment. Please limit comment to three minutes and direct your feedback to council, even though you're typing it in and ask a question, this is not a question and answer forum. This is our opportunity as council to hear feedback from our residents. So, thank you for that, and I will repeat all of those instructions when we enter our public comment, pausing briefly to officially start our meeting until 7:02, and it arrived at 7:02. So, again, officially, welcome to the Lone Tree City Council, February 2nd, 2021, council meeting. I will ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Present.
Carpenter.
Present.
Shaw.
Present.
Mayor Protem Brunnick is excused. Mayor Malley.
Here. So, we want to send our very best wishes to Mayor Protem. She is dealing with a very serious family health issue, and sending her our very best thoughts and prayers this evening, and wishing a speedy return to health. So, with that, I am opening our meeting officially, and I will ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no amendments to our agenda this evening. It is adopted as published. Excuse me. Any conflict of interest from council members, please speak now if you have a conflict. Hearing none, we will move on to our public comment. And again, there are three ways to provide comment to council at any of our council meetings, but any comments that were submitted ahead of time have been forwarded to council and will be included in the official meeting minutes. You can enter a comment now by typing in the Ask a Question box. Your comment will be forwarded to council and included in the official minutes. And if you would like to speak to council live using your phone during this meeting, please type your name, your phone number, and that you would like to speak to council in the Ask a Question box, and you will receive a call from the city, and we will connect you with council, and we will hear your comment live. While I'm waiting to see if folks are going to be asking to join us live for a public comment, I am going to move forward and read our upcoming events and announcements. But please know, right now, you can be typing in your comment or your request for a call from the city. So, again, as always, more information can be found at cityoflone tree.com and thelone treartscenter.org. COVID community testing continues at the Canvas Credit Union. It's every day from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and this will be happening through March of 2021. Visit the city website for more information and to register in advance. There's a couple of livestream events, exciting events happening at the Lone Tree Arts Center. Allen Harris' Harlem After Dark is happening on Friday, February 5th, this Friday, at 8:00 p.m. Another livestream event is 9-E-CHEN Dance Company Lunar New Year Celebration, which is Thursday, February 11th through Saturday, February 13th. Visit the Lone Tree Arts Center website for showtimes, please. And again, the city offices will be closed on Monday, February 15th in observance of President's Day. I'm going to check in with our city clerk to see if anybody has requested to connect with council using their phone.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay. Well, I will close our public comment period and then move on to the consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda includes minutes from our January 19th regular council meeting and claims for the period of January 12th through January 25th of 2021. I'll look for a motion from council on our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Wonderful. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next on our agenda this evening is Public Works, starting off with an award of the 2021 Engineering Consulting Contract with Design LLC, and our deputy city manager, Kristin Bumgartner, is going to lead that off. And then also John Cotton, our friend, our dear, dear friend, and former Public Works Director from By Design is also available for questions. So, Kristin.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me present this item this evening. And next slide, please. At the last study session, John was present to give kind of an update on all the great work he did for the city in 2020, and tonight, we are just looking for council consideration of his 2021 consulting agreement. He is available for questions if there are any, but it's pretty straightforward in that the updated agreement for 2021 is before council for consideration tonight, and this agreement is substantially the same as the 2020 agreement. As far as the substance of the agreement itself, there were no changes. We did make just some slight modifications to the scope of work, which was included as an attachment to the agreement. But John will continue to assist with the final closeout of the Ridge Gate Parkway contracts. He will help with the assistance in completing some rehab work on the bridge rails related to that same project. He will help us obtain a Mile High Flood District acceptance of Pond H for major maintenance, which that capital project was completed last year, and this is the last step in order to have continued maintenance assistance for Mile High Flood District. He will continue to be our representative on the Dr. Cog Technical Advisory Committee, and it also allows for other consultation as requested by city staff. The one thing we are removing, though, is John's representation on the Cherry Creek Basin tack as the city's representative, as we are very fortunate to have an internal staff person, Jacob James, who is very qualified and kind of shadowed John and took over that role in 2020. So, we're happy to keep that with Jacob for this year, but as always, John's always available for continued consultation if we need it. That's really the main change to the agreement, and are happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Well, I think we're all very happy that we can still avail ourselves of the expertise that John has always brought to the city. I don't think there's questions from council. We did thoroughly vet this in our study session. I will pause briefly to verify that there are no additional questions on that, but we can probably put the motion slide up, Kristin. Counsel, here's your chance. Okay. Well, then I'll look for the motion.
I move to award the 2021 Engineering Consulting Contract with By Design LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And hi, John, wherever you are, somewhere in the virtual world. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Award of contract for the long-awaited 2020 and 2021, really, Concrete Replacement Program, and our Director of Public Works and Mobility, Justin Schmitz, is going to present that contract this evening. Justin.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm very excited today to present our award of two contracts. So, we're going to start with our 2021 Concrete Replacement Program, bit of deja vu. We had a very similar conversation a year ago, but we will go through this whole process again. Let me know if you have any questions, and then we have a motion at the end for consideration. So, the 2021 Concrete Replacement Program will focus on concrete curb, gutters, sidewalks, and handicap ramps. Again, this is a program the city has done on an annual basis that are in disrepair and need replacement. This year, the program is all focused along Lincoln Avenue between I-25 and the Western City border. Next slide.
Hey, Justin, before you go on, did you purposely do this on Groundhog's Day because it feels like Groundhog's Day because it's the same thing we did last year?
It works really well. I did it, but now, yeah, that's perfect.
All right. All right. I like the theme. I enjoy it.
Odd convenience. I'll take it.
Yeah.
Great point. And you can see, again, the section that we are referring to on Lincoln is everything west of I-25. So, from the Western City border all the way through Yosemite and all the way past Charles Schwab and to the interchange with I-25. Next slide. We got good response to this bid. So, as you can see, we did receive 11 bids, and we opened them on January 5th, 2021. Again, we tried to get this out really early in the year to get the best prices we could. Dream Builders Incorporated was our apparent low bidder. You can see on this chart that they came in at a price of $329,198. And then our next lowest bidder was Chavez Construction at $432,109. And they range all the way up to the highest. You can see there at $669,395. So, again, a big range of bids, but several of these, at least four of them, are under what we had anticipated for this bid to come in. So, again, when you get 11 bids, it's good because you get a good range and you get a really competitive process. Next slide. So, staff did check with the Dream Builders, what was our apparent low bidder. We did check their unit prices. We also called references. And through that process, the city felt that they did not qualify as our lowest, most qualified responsive bidder. And really, there were several reasons, some of the referrals we got, but also there were two bid items that were the biggest concern. One was traffic control, and one was erosion control. You can imagine on a street like Lincoln Avenue, those need to be very, very valuable and should cost a significant amount to whichever contractor's doing this work. And those bid prices came in, as you can see, approximately 93% lower than the average. When we see a number like that, you know, we're trying to ask questions, and typically, you know, there's some concern about will they actually be able to put in the type of traffic control they need to keep the project safe and meet the needs of the city. And in this case, we felt in consultation with the city attorney that that did not qualify, and so we sent them a termination letter and recommended to move on to our second low bidder to ensure a quality contract. Next slide. Again, our second lowest bidder was Chavez Construction Incorporated. Staff has checked references for Chavez Construction and have worked with them in the past with generally positive feedback. We've had several projects that Chavez has done for the city of Lone Tree, and with all contractors, there's been a range of success, but we've had a lot of good working relationships with them. Last year, they did the crooked stick traffic signal at Ridge Gate Parkway and completed that project on time, and it was a good working relationship we had with them. Chavez is also the low bidder on the overlay project, which we'll be presenting next, and plans to construct these concurrently to efficiently complete the work. So, we do bid these out separately, but in this case, the apparent low bidder on both is the same contract, which will allow some efficiencies in the system. Next slide. What I'm trying to highlight here is both projects at once, just so we can have an idea of kind of the overall budget. But what I did want to focus on, you can see the highlighted section, is just the one we're referring to now, our concrete replacement contract. So, the design, there is no fee with the design. It was completed in 2019. The bid for this project was $432,109. And the materials testing for this project is estimated at $15,000 for a total of $447,109. Again, this is below the budget that we had anticipated for this project, which gives us a little bit of additional cushion. You can see, when we add in what we'll be talking about next, with the asphalt overlay contract, we will still have additional cushion for both of those projects within our anticipated budget that was awarded by council for 2021. I know there's kind of a lot of info on there, but I did want to just make sure. It was easier to show it all at once, but this contract we're talking about right now is for that value that you see there. Next slide. So, one thing I wanted to highlight, the schedule and the communication process for this, because I know every time I present these great questions to both of those. So, we wanted to make sure we knew. So, we are planning to proceed, we are awarding the contract tonight, but obviously, we can't start construction right away. We are waiting for the weather. There's some other factors we need to consider, but we would be looking to issue that notice to proceed in the March-April timeframe. Obviously, that depends on what kind of winter we have in March and April. The sooner we kind of see those long-term weather projections being positive, we can get the contractor out there right away at the start of the construction season. So, again, and we anticipate this contract to be under construction from March through May. Again, it's about six to eight weeks, depending on when we start to get this concrete work. And all the concrete work needs to go ahead of the asphalt work. Obviously, you want to do all that work and then put the new asphalt right up against this new concrete. As far as communication goes, the contractor will communicate all timing, closures, and schedules with the communication, with the community, in coordination with city staff. This will involve multiple avenues, but three things we want to highlight here. We're going to require variable message boards so that those messages can get out to the drivers, the commuters, the people coming in and out of the city. In addition, weekly updates will be posted in multiple forums, and individual outreach will be done to businesses and areas that are going to have short-term access. Obviously, with a paving project, there's a certain time the mill has to come through. We have to have paving and have a little bit of time where we don't have people driving over it. So, each one of those projects will be reached out to each affected business in advance of that happening, so they can coordinate, work with any of their patrons to make sure that that can be addressed. Next slide. Which I think might be that, yes. So, the council question slide, figured some construction vehicles might make sense on this one. So, but any questions on this contract, and again, we're referring to this one only as the Concrete Replacement Program contract.
Justin, is that the picture we had to clean up all that mud from the 470 project?
That's correct.
Take a better picture. I'd like a positive picture, sir. All right. So, sad that I know that, but all right, let's see what questions council may have. Councilmember Anderson.
Just recollection, Justin. Are we doing all concrete for the whole length of the highway, or are we spot doing concrete?
Great question, councilman. We are only doing the damaged sections or the sections that have been identified that need to be repaired, and that does include some curb ramp improvements that need to be done along the corridor, as well as some, you know, if you drive through, there's some of the concrete pans, and some of those have been damaged. So, it's all the concrete that is damaged. We are not replacing the concrete that is in good condition along the corridor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shaw.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Carpenter.
No questions, but I applaud you in doing the due diligence and looking at the erosion control, as we can see in that slide right there. And oftentimes, the lowest bid is not always the best bid, and I know we've had some decent history with Chavez. So, thanks for thoroughness.
Yeah, great points, Jay, and I think the traffic control, particularly on Lincoln Avenue, is going to be really essential for a successful project. And Justin, I appreciate you outlining the communication strategy that will be employed for this project, and I think as we get closer to the actual work, I think council would appreciate the opportunity to have a study session on the communication that you're going to be doing with our residents and our businesses. It is a very sensitive part of the city, and whenever we work in any part of our city, we want to overly proactively communicate, but I think council would love to hear more as we get closer to the actual work period. And, you know, this picture also highlights one of our great partners on the project, the beautiful median that was constructed by the Park Meadows Metropolitan District. So, there was a good part of that slide, I should acknowledge. So, all right, no other questions for me, but I will, Justin, if you have the motion slide.
Yeah, next slide should have a motion for your consideration.
Yep. Thank you. Okay.
I move to approve the contract with Chavez Construction, Inc., in the amount of $432,109 for the 2021 Concrete Replacement Program, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents, subject to changes approved by the city attorney, that do not material increase the obligations of the city.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four dash zero, but that's not all, folks. As Justin indicated, we are now going to talk about the asphalt overlay project, and again, fitting for Groundhog's Day, Justin.
Yeah, perfect timing. So, again, excited to present tonight for your consideration, the award of the contract for the 2021 Asphalt Overlay Project. The 2021 Street Overlay Program will focus, again, this is a program we run every year annually, but this year, it will focus on Lincoln Avenue from I-25 all the way to the city of Lone Tree's Western border with Douglas County. The concrete repair work that we just were talking about will be completed in the same section and per a separate contract in advance of this paving work. Next slide. This is going to look very familiar slide because I think we've seen it four times tonight, and we might see it once more. But this section that we're referring to on Lincoln Avenue is all the way from the Western City border to I-25, includes the intersection in Yosemite Street through the section near Charles Schwab and all the other intersections along this area. Next slide. So, a few things I highlight about this. This project was bid in four phases to allow the city to remove phases from the project if required to meet budget. This was the same thing that the city did in 2020. We bid this out to have a little flexibility. Again, in 2020, due to some of the impacts of COVID-19, we did cancel that contract, but we re-presented and bid this out to allow us to bid it in four phases. Now, the bids that we all received do allow us to complete all four phases with this contract. So, that is good news. We never sure on this big of a project what kind of bids we might get, and we wanted to make sure if we didn't get, you know, bids that we could deliver all of it, we could still deliver phases of it. But what we're seeing is the bids that we receive will allow us to complete all the phases. Next slide. So, this project, we received six bids, and they were opened on January 5th as well, 2021, and Chavez Construction was the apparent low bidder. You can see the project ranged in bids from $1,660,000 down to Chavez's at $1,377,398. Next slide. Staff did check references for Chavez Construction and have worked with them in the past, and the feedback was positive. Again, we have also had conversations with Chavez about understanding the priority and how much of an important corridor Lincoln Avenue is for the city of Lone Tree, and how high of a standard we are going to hold them to. And I think they understand that. We've already had some initial discussions with them. I'm just kind of making sure we all understand that, and look forward to having a chance to work with them again. Next slide. I wanted to highlight a few additional pieces on this slide right here. So, for our 2021 Asphalt Overlay, at the top, I wanted to highlight, we have had an incredible amount of success in working to obtain some partner funding, some very generous partner donations from our metro districts. You can see above, and we discussed some of these studies, all of these at study session tonight, but all of the funds that are going to be provided will contribute to this asphalt overlay project. As you can see above, the Park Meadows Metro District has committed to contribute $500,000. The Omni Park Metro District, $25,000. Heritage Hills Metro District, $25,000. And again, the one mill that we received from Rampart Range Metro District for a value of $235,000 and $561 would also be contributed to this project. With that, you can see below is, again, the highlighted section for the asphalt overlay contract we're referring to. The design, there is no cost for the design. This was completed in 2019. The bid that we received, the low bid, was $1,377,398. The material testing, we anticipate about $5,000. It's a little cheaper to do material testing for asphalt and concrete, as you can see here. That puts a total of $1,382,398 for this contract. When we combine this contract with the concrete replacement, if you go over to the right of the contract, you can see that total value for both contracts is $1,829,507. We had a budget for the 2021 budget of $2150,000. That gives us $320,493 to have a little bit of contingency, as well as to allow us to do some design work for our 2022 Asphalt Overlay Program as we proceed down this year, as well as having some additional cushion in the event some additional work needs to be done. Next slide. Again, wanted to highlight both the schedule and the communication. It's going to be very similar to what we talked about for the last contract, but the notice to proceed for this contract will be issued in around May of 2021. That is dependent on the timing of the concrete work, as well as the weather that we see kind of in that spring timeframe. But we would like to get this paving done as early in the paving season as possible to get that complete, and hopefully, before we see all kinds of normal traffic return late this summer back to the community and back to the metro region. The construction schedule would be May to July of 2021. Once the work is done, it's pretty quick, right? Mill and overlay work is relatively quick, but all the prep work, a lot of that work to get everything set up and done correctly at all the intersections takes a little bit of time, but the major impact is going to be relatively quick. Finally, the contractor will be communicating all timing, closures, and schedules with the community in coordination with city staff. This will include adding variable message boards throughout the project, posting weekly updates in multiple forums, and again, individual outreach to businesses and areas that will have short-term access impacts from this work. Next slide, which I think might be questions. Yes. So, any questions in regards to our asphalt overlay contract, or anything as it relates to the Concrete Replacement Program coordination?
All right. Councilmember Carpenter.
No, Justin, I appreciate you reinforcing how important this is with the contractor. It's a pretty high-profile and certainly very critical project. So, thanks for that, and yeah, look forward to the communication that they will. I think it's going to be critical, as we always talk about, communicating with the public in terms of timing and what the impact will be, but looking forward to it.
And I think council wants to extend some gratitude to Councilmember Carpenter for his liaison and work with Park Meadows Metropolitan District for their generous contribution to the project. And I know all council has good, strong relationships, but really, you're the tip of the spear there, Mr. Carpenter, so thank you for your good work on that.
No, we appreciate their support, obviously, and their partnership in all the metro districts. And I was going to acknowledge them in the next agenda item, but I will certainly give them my appreciation and gratitude as well, just as I did in the study session. Thanks.
Want to acknowledge you, though, Jay, so thank you. This is our chance to say thanks to you. So, all right, Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, and very much thanks to Councilmember Carpenter for his work with Park Meadows Metro District, and so grateful for their partnership. Thank you, Justin, for that additional level of communication to the contractor. I have no other questions.
Thanks. Win. Councilmember Anderson.
I'd also like to reinforce the appreciation to our metro partners for stepping up and helping us with this very important project for moving people through the city. One question on schedule, I see May through July. Any chance we're finishing early July around the Fourth Holiday?
Ideally, yes. I'd love to be done by then. I think, obviously, we'd have to work around, and we write our contracts to work around events and some of those kind of things. I'm hoping we can have some sort of a nice Fourth of July event, but yes, I think the goal would be to wrap this up as early in the paving season, and if things go really well, you know, I think that is possible. But again, there's a lot of factors, obviously, councilman, that can happen between now and then, so we certainly want to give a little bit of cushion.
Well, kudos to you and your team, Justin, for getting the contract out, getting the bids open, and so once the weather and the conditions allow, we will be mobilizing and starting the work and trying to get it done to meet that tight schedule outlined by Councilmember Anderson. But I think we all want to see it get done as quickly as possible, and you have positioned the project to do just that. So, thanks. All right. So, let's look for the motion.
I move to approve the contract with Chavez Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,377,398 for the 2021 Street Overlay Program, and authorize the city manager to
of $1,377,398 for the 2021 Street Overlay Program and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents, subject to changes approved by the city attorney that do not materially increase the obligations of the city.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. And Justin, you're just telling us a story tonight, so we're going to go on to the next chapter here, and that is Resolution 21-03, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and Omni Park Metropolitan District regarding a financial contribution towards milling and overlay of Lincoln Avenue, one of the great tremendous partners that are making this project possible in 2021. So, Justin, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of city council. I'm probably not going to repeat all of that one. We'll go ahead and move on, but yeah, this is the first of the IGAs that we briefed at study session. There's going to be three IGAs that will all support the Lincoln Avenue project tonight. We're working through the IGA with Omni Park, and then the additional two IGAs will be coming, we believe, at our next council meeting. So again, some quick background, the City of Lone Tree Public Works did bid out the 2020 Asphalt Overlay and Concrete Replacement Program to improve Lincoln Avenue. Due to the unknown impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic to the financial business of the city, these contracts were canceled, requiring these critical roadway repairs to be delayed. Next slide. And based really on the high importance of this project and the positive impact that these improvements will have on all the adjacent communities and taxpayers along Lincoln Avenue, the city conducted several meetings with the adjacent metro districts to discuss the benefits of the project and potential funding options. Through those discussions, all the metro districts adjacent to this section of Lincoln Avenue were very supportive of the project and additionally agreed to partner with a financial contribution to support the project. Next slide. Summarized on this is all of the contributions to the 2021 Asphalt Overlay Project on Lincoln Avenue. Again, the one we're referring to right now for this IGA is with the Omni Park Metro District for contribution amount of $25,000, and we are presenting it obviously at our February 2nd meeting. The other two that you see on this list, we plan to bring back at our next council meeting. Next slide. There are three general agreements that the city has in the IGA. There are more details in the actual resolution, if you have any questions, but these are the three I wanted to highlight. The city agrees that the district's contribution shall not create for the district any responsibility or liability with respect to the project, which is the sole responsibility of the city. Again, the city is going to bid this project, manage this project, oversee the project, and is responsible for the project. And I think that makes sense, right? The districts are contributing, but they're not part of the management of the project. The city agrees that it will repay the district the contribution in full in the event the city fails to complete construction of this project, as evidenced by the city's preliminary acceptance of this work by December 31st, 2021. Now, I know that is nowhere near July 4th that we just talked about, you know, December 31st, but we did want to give ourselves a little bit of cushion there, just in the event, we didn't want to return money, and we've got, obviously that makes sense. But if something happens through this construction season, we would return that. And finally, the city agrees and acknowledges that the contribution is a one-time contribution for the 2021 Asphalt Overlay Project, and it will only be used for this project. Next slide. And that was it. Any questions on this IGA and then I have a motion for your consideration on the next slide?
Thanks, Justin. Who wants to question one of our great partners giving us money? We'll start with Mike.
I don't go there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we all just want to say a huge thank you, but.
Absolutely. Much appreciation.
Yeah. Councilmember Shaw.
No questions, just thanks.
Yep. Councilmember Carpenter.
No questions either, just appreciation.
Absolutely, because you can never say thank you enough to one of our great partners. So with that, I think we'll look for the motion slide.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-03, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and Omni Park Metropolitan District regarding a financial contribution toward milling and overlay of Lincoln Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Look, we did it all together almost that time. All right, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thanks, Justin, for taking us through the story of Lincoln Avenue overlaying concrete replacement. It had, it's a happily ever after story, so thanks for that. All right, moving on to our administrative matters, which we have two really exciting opportunities here as well. So first up is Ordinance 21-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code to add a new section 4-3-140 and a new Article 6 concerning construction use tax credits and fee waivers for qualifying attainable housing projects. This is first reading. I'm going to hand it over to our deputy city manager, Kristin Baumgartner, to lead our conversation. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I feel fortunate I've been able to speak with you each so much tonight, but very excited to be bringing this one for official consideration to council during the regular meeting. Next slide, please. We did go through this in quite a bit of detail in the study session, and so I did take out some of the discussion slides, and I'm just going to highlight kind of the ordinance itself as a reminder to council as we look for a possible approval on first reading. So again, as we've talked in the past, attainable housing policy documents already are in place in Lone Tree, and this has been an important focus for council over the last several years. It's discussed as being a priority in our comprehensive plan and our east side subarea plans. There are requirements in the east side annexation agreement as far as required number of units for attainable housing on the east side, and subsequent to that being approved in November of 2017 and July of 2018, a Ridge Gate attainable housing plan was approved by city council. Next slide, please. In all of these documents, though, none of them have any requirement or consideration for the city to provide any type of direct waivers or incentives for these types of programs. And again, as a reminder, these programs are really put out there to allow everyone who lives and works in the city to have the opportunity for affordable housing, to be able to live close to where they work, and also to offer a wide range of options for all different ages, whether you're getting your first home or looking to downsize in your retirement years. So staff is recommending tonight adding a new section to Chapter 4 to provide an option for tax credits and fee waivers for projects that meet certain attainable housing criteria, and this code change would apply citywide. Next slide, please. So this would be adding a new section to Chapter 4, Section 4-3-140, under the construction use tax area. This would be specific to construction use tax only. It would be up to 100% tax credit for eligible projects. We did separate the ordinance to include different criteria for owner-occupied dwelling units versus rental dwelling units, and any of these agreements as far as tax credits would require city council approval. Next slide, please. Additionally, the prior section addresses taxes. We are also proposing a new section be added to Chapter 4, Article 4-6-10, which talks about fees versus taxes. And we first are just adding in language in the code about our current processes about fee adoption by city council, which allows council to pass by resolution certain fees to recoup costs incurred by the city staff. In addition, we're then proposing a new section, Section 4-6-20, for the waiver of reduction of fees to follow our council adopted policies as far as fee reductions or waivers, but also adding a new section for attainable housing that would follow the same criteria for consideration as in the previous section under construction use tax. And again, on attainable housing fee waivers, city council would have to approve any of those. Next slide, please. So as far as the criteria, we split this in first as rental criteria. So for rental projects that come forward to city council for consideration, a minimum of 20% of the units must provide housing for persons or households with incomes at or below a weighted average of 60% of the area median income. Additionally, the rental units must be kept attainable for a minimum of 40 years, and we are proposing in this ordinance a tiered approach based on direct proportion to the percentage of attainable for rent dwelling units. So for example, if a project comes in with 25% of the total dwelling units provided qualifying as attainable, then the city may credit a 25% tax credit, and this would be the same requirements and the same method for fee waivers in addition to tax credits. Next slide, please. On the owner-occupied criteria, as we've discussed, these are a lot more complicated, and so for these types of projects, we have added in a provision to specifically say that the city is interested in incentivizing these types of development because we do feel like homeownership is an important component, meeting attainable goals. But secondly, we did remove specific minimum criteria, and we propose a general provision in the code to negotiate affordability criteria, tax credits, and fee waivers on owner-occupied projects on a case-by-case basis through an agreement between the applicant and the city. And this allows us flexibility and also to give the developers opportunities to come to the city with creative projects that we can then see how we can support them on a case-by-case basis. Next slide, please. And so with that, I'm open to any questions from council, but we'll also put up the motion slide for consideration.
Thanks, Kristin. And again, we have been through this a number of times in study session and most recently about an hour ago, but during the dinner break, questions may have arisen, so let's make sure we get them addressed if they are. So Councilmember Carpenter, any questions?
No, no questions. Thanks for all your hard work on it.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you for staff's recommendations and for digging to find this great solution to our, to our need.
And Councilmember Anderson.
No questions. Glad we're moving forward.
Yep, I think I just echo the comments made by council members. I think this important first chapter and how we're going to be addressing this as a city. And again, thanks for the stewardship of Councilmember Shaw and her good work with the Douglas Hanning Housing Partnership and being our trusted advisor on council. So with that, the motion is, slide is up there, guys.
I move to approve Ordinance 21-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code to add a new section 4-3-140 and a new Article 6 concerning construction use tax credits and fee waivers for qualifying attainable housing projects on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay, Kristin, everybody's, what a double hitter for everybody. I guess it was a triple hitter for Justin, but moving on to another important ordinance for consideration this evening, and it's Ordinance 21-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 7 concerning a tax incentive program for businesses and the entertainment district plan development. And this is first reading, and again, turning it to Kristin.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. And next slide, please. So as discussed in study session as well, staff is proposing an ordinance to create a tax shareback program that would incentivize appropriate reuse or redevelopment projects in the Lone Tree Entertainment District. Next slide, please. We are looking to use this to encourage development for an area for people to shop, eat, and pursue leisure and recreational activities, and includes incentivizing uses such as restaurants, retail shopping, entertainment venues, and other similar uses. Current zoning and city design standards would still apply, and these properties must be within the Westbrook Entertainment and Sports District PD. Next slide, please. Here is a picture of what that area consists of, and it is the area that all of us are familiar with around the movie theater, the bowling alley. It also does include the city office building and a few of the offices behind our current building. Next slide, please. So we talked in study session in detail about kind of the different properties in this area, but wanted to just mainly during this presentation, show this summary that, you know, over the last several years, we have seen significant turnover in a lot of the properties, where we've seen long-term vacancies, properties in transition. There's a lot of for lease or sell properties now with Fox and Hound and Mimi's being two of the most recent ones coming on the market. And then additionally, with COVID, we have the movie theater and the bowling alley, which have been, had a lot of challenges during that time, and the movie theater is still not open, and we are not sure when that might be reopened, depending on how this year progresses. And so in total, there's about 275,000 square feet of properties that we feel like could really benefit from this ordinance we're proposing this evening. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance itself again adds a new Article 7 to Chapter 4, and this will be entitled the Enhanced Tax Incentive Program, or the ETIP. Again, it encourages redevelopment or substantial expansion of businesses in the entertainment district for a limited period of time. So this ordinance will be in effect for seven years from the effective date. It also is encouraging employment opportunities in the area, looking to preserve and enhance tenant mix, stimulate economic and social vibrancy in the area, and retain and increase tax collections which contribute to providing municipal services. Next slide, please. There are a lot of new definitions in this ordinance, and we did discuss these during study session, but just briefly, there will be an enhanced tax component, which is the amount of admissions and/or sales tax over the established base amount. We're looking at both admissions and sales tax because this area of the city, those are the two main tax types that are generated. This established base amount that we refer to will be calculated based on the previous 60 months that the business was open. To determine then, the city will retain the base amount, and then only amounts above and beyond that, which are in essence new revenue, will be considered for the shareback. For any newly established businesses on undeveloped property, we would look at a similar business to establish a base. And again, the reasoning behind this is that we want to make sure we can continue to provide all the services the city has always provided and not impact our tax base, but have an opportunity to share with the businesses that are coming in to invest in our communities so that they can hopefully be more successful as they start up in the city. Next slide, please. We are defining a project in this ordinance as an establishment of a new business or substantial expansion of an existing business generating sales or admissions tax revenues, and each of these projects that would be considered will be required to have a separate ETIP agreement between the applicant and the city that will outline details specifically, including the base amount, shareback period, et cetera, for this specific project. Next slide, please. And then finally, we are also defining a term enhanced improvements to be another opportunity for some additional shareback for improvements that are over and above that which would be otherwise required through the city's development process. Things that would fall into this category could include streetscape, plazas, parks, public art, fountains, identification signs, traffic-related improvements, or mobility connectivity. Next slide, please. So in order to participate, there's certain criteria that the ordinance outlines. First, they would be required to submit an application through the city clerk's office. We would require that the business requesting this incentive would generate enhanced taxes of at least $7,500 in the first year of operation. If the property is vacant, or if there's a planned transition of tenants and/or no business being operational, those are the three different components for consideration of this incentive. They also must meet the city zoning plan development district and design standards and guidelines and have public-related benefits. And what we mean by that, and we define that in the ordinance, is that we look at job creation, we look at redevelopment opportunities, and we look at tax generation as all being public-related benefits. Next slide, please. The specific incentive structure first starts with the admissions and sales tax components, which will be considered on a tiered approach for no more than five years and below are listed the maximum percentage amounts. And so this is one example of a five-year agreement, but the ordinance does give us some flexibility where it could be less than five years, it could be less than these percentages, but these are the maximums listed in the ordinance, putting up some guardrails that we would not share back more than these amounts. Secondly, we are offering a consideration for construction use tax shareback on a limited basis when a project includes some of those enhanced improvements that we defined earlier in their project, and those would be considered up to 100% shareback toward the improvements being built. And then lastly, we did want to leave some flexibility for lodging tax shareback. There are a few hotels currently in the area. We don't consider this to be. There are a few hotels currently in the area. We don't consider this to be something that we will see happen frequently, but on a limited basis, we do want that flexibility to shareback lodging tax if it made sense, and if council was in support of that. Next slide, please. So with that, open to any council questions, and again, the motion slide will be next for consideration.
Thanks, Kristin. And again, we were, we did have a pretty thorough briefing at numerous study sessions, including the one just prior to our meeting this evening, but again, want to check in with council and make sure there's nothing else that they thought about. So we will start with Councilmember Anderson.
No additional questions. Look forward to, hopefully this incentive helps some of our businesses or prospective businesses to move us towards our vision of what we'd like the entertainment incentive to be like. It's, has so much potential. Incentives are good for helping businesspeople to grasp onto a project and move forward, so looking forward to it.
Thanks, Mike. Anything, Councilmember Carpenter?
No, just again, appreciation for the creativity of it, and I think providing incentives is critical in the environment we're going to be seeing going forward, for sure. So, so thanks.
And Councilmember Shaw?
No further questions, and I think the other two council members have spoken my thoughts as well.
I couldn't agree more. I think it echoes the comments, and I think we do want to make sure we're encouraging investment in the city and this, again, opportunity area in the city. And you know, the other thing that I want to highlight is that walkability. There are so many residential neighborhoods that could walk into these, this area, both our single-family residences and our apartments. And I think the city has tried to invest in some mobility improvements, and I think that was a first step with the traffic light in the park. Again, I've said that already, but I do think that's an important part. And I think this, to push the private sector investment there, I think this is probably the right thing, and hopefully at the right time, particularly in light of COVID. So thanks to council for your great thoughts on this, and really thanks to staff for really, and Jeff Hallwell. We want to acknowledge his good work on this as well, for kind of coming up with this creativity and innovation on doing something like this. So I'll look for the motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 21-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Longtree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 7 concerning a tax incentive program for businesses in the entertainment district plan development on first reading.
I second.
And so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries four to zero. So that concludes administrative matters. And last on our agenda, as always, is our council comments. And tonight, we have to say goodbye to somebody. They're not leaving quite yet, but this is probably council's last opportunity to acknowledge the great work of one of the Longtree team members, one of the executive staff. And obviously, I think we all know, I'm talking about Lisa Riggsby-Petersen. I think City of Longtree is blessed with many, many resources, and perhaps one of the best resources we have available to us is the talent of the amazing staff that supports the good work of the city. And Lisa's certainly played a very special role. She has been with the city since before the doors opened of the Art Center, and I think she really was, you know, foundational and instrumental in the reputation and the, of our award-winning facility. I think she has positioned the city so well to continue on the great success that she started. And I can only imagine what it must feel like to kind of be the first. You know, I'm the third mayor, and I still feel some ownership here, but being the first to lead the Art Center, being the first to develop our season programming, being the first to develop the impact programming, to create the relationships with the foundation, with the business community, with the, with the Longtree residents, who were so instrumental in bringing the vision of an art center to the Longtree community. And Lisa was the one charged with executing on that vision, and I think we couldn't be more pleased with the path that she has laid out for us. So on behalf of a very grateful community, a very grateful mayor, council member, citizen, I just want to lead off and just say how much we appreciated Lisa's good work and how much we wish her all the best in the future successes that she will have. So thank, thank you, thank you, thank you, Lisa. So with that, I'm going to turn it to, we'll start with Councilmember Carpenter for his comments.
Yeah, so it's been a very busy last couple of weeks, but I really would like to focus on my, my thanks to Lisa for, for her leadership and all the development that she's done. It's, you know, the evolution of the Art Center under your, under your reign has been spectacular. And you truly are the face of the Art Center. And just, I wanted just to give you my sincere and genuine thanks for partnering with us in the last five years of me being here on the council and all the years you've been involved with the Art Center. Your legacy will live on. And thanks again for all of your hard work and, and your love of the Art Center and the patrons and the community at large and all the employees there as well. So thanks.
Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. A couple of observations. One, there is truly a sense of moving forward for the community, as some of my friends over 70 have received their COVID vaccines. There's just a brighter outlook about things to come, which then leads me to the Art Center. And I think, Madam Mayor, you have mentioned so many of the things that Lisa has brought over the years to the Art Center. I personally will miss her a good deal. And at the same time, I have some excitement around what can be built from the very strong foundation that she has formed here. And I look forward to seeing where she lands. I'm sure it will be somewhere exciting, and I want to know what, what she's got planned. The lady with the small feet and big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, here we are celebrating 10 years with the Art Center, and at the same time, losing a pillar in the community in terms of your hard work, your dedication, your effectiveness, the recognition that we've had locally and nationally in terms of your, your efforts to bring programming for a wide range of people to appreciate the arts. We're going to miss you, Lisa. Appreciate all that you've done, and best wishes going forward as you continue your career. I'm sure there are great things out there for, for you in the future. Thank you very much, Lisa.
So the only appropriate way to say goodbye to somebody in the arts, in addition to the brava, is the standing ovation. So it's hard to do a standing ovation sitting in a chair, but I think Lisa would appreciate over anybody, the, what she taught all, well, she taught me for sure, and I thought, taught many in the community about another way to give a standing ovation. It's the waving of the hands at the impact programming. So I think we all just want you to see the waving of the hands from us, Lisa, and again, the best wishes for your future success. And I think, and I just want to touch on something you said as far as a way forward and moving forward. And I think outside of saying goodbye to somebody who, who made a true difference in our community, I think we are starting to see the window crack, the door opened, the beautiful day we had today, that, that we are very hopeful that life returning to our new normal in 2021. And, and the door that is just beginning to open will continue to open. And I think with the leadership of council and the tremendous staff at the City of Longtree, I am very bullish on the City of Longtree's reopening and opening our door even wider and better. And so we're all going to keep rowing in that direction and, you know, continue to move forward with strong partnerships like we have with our metro districts. I think, you know, we were tested last year in 2020 on a whole host of levels, and I really do feel that we have collectively met that challenge that was put in front of us. And I'm looking forward to building on, on that for future successes. So with that, again, a huge tremendous thank you to Lisa Riggsby-Petersen, and we are adjourned, council. So again, our standing o to Lisa, our standing wave to Lisa. All right.